Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming tonight. We hope you enjoyed dinner, it was awesome. We'd like to thank Papa Franks. This evening, once a year, we try to get together with the city and the school to do a joint meeting. We have one document that we're going to do together, the MOU, we'll get to that in a minute. So I would like to call this meeting to order and document the time of 6:38. And as is our, if we can rise and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. And as is our school habit here, we're going to do a three or four-minute mindfulness session. We started this about a year and a little bit ago when the elementary schools started their mindfulness program. We decided to adopt it on the board, both in respect to the kids that are doing it in school, and also for us on the board that come from who knows where before we get here, as a method to try to shift our minds from where we were to what we've got to do here. So if you would join us, Bob Torre, if you would.
Absolutely. So if you are seating, grab a seat. If you're standing, just find a good comfortable stance. And what we're going to do is we're going to take a deep breath in, that's the sort of the focus, and the out breath is relaxation. You can close your eyes as you're comfortable or find an object to stare at. So just take a deep breath in and focus, straighten up, and breathe out, settle in. Take a deep breath in, straighten up, and breathe out, settle in. Breathe in, straighten up, and breathe out, settle in. So we have arrived here. Find a nice breathing pattern. Land in your seat, land in your body. And we're going to set a focus for an intention around healthy community, around Winuski citizens, all citizens, being healthy and cared for and well. And you can breathe in that focus and breathe out, settle in. One focus of mindfulness is to have words in your head to sort of bring your mind back to. And if we can make a wish for all Winuski citizens, may we be free of inner and outer dangers. May all Winuski citizens be free of inner and outer dangers. May we be happy and at ease in our lives and in our lives with each other. And on your next exhale, you can bring yourself back into the room.
Okay, thank you very much for participating. It's the one piece that usually turns my head around from where I was to where I'm going, so I very much appreciate that most of the time. Our next item on our agenda here is a focus on learning. We do this every month. We bring something to the community for items that are going on in the school. Tonight we chose proficiency-based graduation, and it's a change that we're working through now. And we're going to have, Leon, you're going to lead the discussion here, and Sean, to show you what some of the items that are going on in the school. Take it away.
So good evening, everybody. I'm Sean McManus, superintendent of schools, so welcome. Tonight, Principal Leon Wheeler and I are going to talk about student-centered learning and proficiency-based graduation requirements. We love all these big words and acronyms in education and have many of them, and it can be very complex, so I'm going to try and make things as simple as possible for everyone. The reason that we are moving to student-centered learning and proficiency-based graduation is because we want to meet our ends of making every single student in Winuski college and career-ready. Another reason is because we have to. So there is the intrinsic motivation to do what is best for our students and prepare them for the world, and there's also the external pressure, so to speak, through legislation that says, "Schools in Vermont must develop these systems by 2020." So one of the key concepts to understand is proficiencies. And this is different than the way many of us were assessed when we were in school. And it's different in that you don't just get a letter grade, A, B, C, or D for going to a class. And you don't go to a class at certain times and certain days, but you have concepts, skills, and content that you have to show that you know how to do, that you can demonstrate. And some of those concepts may take you a short period of time. You may be a really good writer and you may be able to show that you're a good writer quickly, but you may need some help in your oral communication and talking to other people about a concept. So the state of Vermont has prescribed education quality standards, that they say every student must show that they can do these things, and they're listed here. And you'll see that they're a combination of what we call transferable skills and content. So content being math or science, skills being reading or writing, communication. So you all are in the best place that you can be in Winuski right now because we are way ahead of the game. We have our own local graduate expectations, these six skills that we've been working on for a number of years and that the community helped to develop. And these are the six things that we set out for our students to be able to demonstrate that they can do them well by the time they graduate, and it'll be a part of them earning a diploma. So the vehicle with which students, parents, yes? No. Fatuma was supposed to be here. I'm sorry. Yes, I understand. We had scheduled an interpreter and she did not show up. Yeah, I'm sorry that your time was wasted. The vehicle with which these skills and this content will be designed for students is through what's called a PLP, our personalized learning plan, which is also prescribed by the Agency of Education in the state. So what will happen is a parent, teacher, and the student will sit down and design this plan and incorporate all of those skills and content so that they can, over the course of their high school career, figure out how they're going to demonstrate these proficiencies. So now what we're going to do, that's kind of the setup and why we're doing this, that we want students to be at the center of their learning and being a part of it and taking ownership. And we also have to do this as prescribed by the state. But we also know that it's best for students, and Winuski is way ahead of the game. We're being held up as an example of innovation in the area of student-centered learning and proficiency-based graduation. So you should feel good that our school is positioned well and that our students are positioned well to meet the standards set by the state. Now, Principal Leon Wheeler is going to do a little bit deeper dive into what it looks like in the school and what we are already doing.
Good, thank you. So as Sean had said, we defined six graduation expectations, and we said, "These are the skills that are identified by our community, by higher education, by businesses, as being really essential. Our students need these skills to be college and career-ready." We also talked to colleges and we were clear that another thing our students need in order to be college and career-ready is a level of reading English and a level of mathematics. And so we've defined a level that is required for our students to graduate, and that is defined primarily by what level of reading and math do students need to have in order to enter CCV, the Community College of Vermont, and be successful without remedial support. So that's the bar that we're establishing. So GXs and a reading and math level are going to be required for graduation for students. The other thing that comes into play is these things at the top are overarching skills. We also have content. We have content standards that have been defined in reading and in mathematics and humanities in each of the other core content areas. So we looked at all of those standards and we are identifying a few, about 2021, that we see are really essential, and those will be called graduation proficiencies, GPs, a little confusing. Thank you. I'll slow it down too. We okay so far? Good, alright. So those are called graduation proficiencies. Students will take classes. They may look similar to the current classes. They may look different. Each of the classes will be based on a content standard. And in that class, they will be also practicing graduation expectation skills. Those things coming together, and they're going to be practiced from grade six through grade 12. And the reality is, they're also aligned from pre-kindergarten through grade 12. One of the blessings of our community is that we have a pre-K to 12 building, and all of the levels are aligned in the same way to support our students graduating college and career-ready. So structurally, in order to ensure that our kids are able to develop those skills and be ready, we... Slow. We already have a middle school structure where there's two middle school teams. The high school is going to be restructured, and there will be three high school houses. Each of those houses will have a group of 70 to 80 students on the house. And those houses will be the place where students are provided support and counsel and advised on their pathway through high school and developing their personalized learning plan to map that journey out. Some of the ways, the learning options that they will have, and most of them we currently have now as we redesigned our school over the last few years. They'll have regular classes that our teacher taught. They'll have laboratory class opportunities where they can come in and out as they need and get support from adults. They'll have student-designed, if you've heard of the iLab. The iLab is about student-designed learning opportunities, as well as college classes that they can access, virtual high school or virtual learning, and community-based learning. So we have a lot of options for students as they work their way through their high school years and develop the skills. The focus of all their classes is to be exposed to graduation proficiencies, these content standards, and to practice the transferable skills. And at the end of each marking period, there will be a demonstration by the students of the skills that they've developed. And I'll talk more about that and show you some pictures in just a minute. So in order to help students and staff alike to understand what does this really look like when we focus on skills, these transferable skills, we have a, we've defined what we're calling a keystone habit, and the habit is the GX champ of the day. Every day, students are nominated for doing something really well in one little part of one GX. So we've broken the GXs down, and each of these students, when they've done something great, they get nominated, and we choose them and we celebrate them on a daily basis. And we read the names of every student who was nominated that day. One of them chooses or is chosen as champ. And you see the really great-looking belt that we have? The kids, the kids wear that with pride. They love it. Here's some more pictures. These are pictures from last school year. We started this in January last year, and there is genuine excitement. More importantly, students and staff are starting to understand what is this change moving towards proficiency-based learning? Oh, well, look at that. If you don't know, two of our school board student reps are here, Levanda Taylor and Rainbow Chen, and they, last year, each were nominated as champ one day. So this is our daily celebration in just a little way so that we get a sense of what it means to focus on these transferable skills. We also have what we're calling the expo. And we had our first of the expos last year in June, the end of the school year. And that is a time for students, every student grade six through 12, to show two things they've been working on. One, about critical thinking, problem-solving GX, and one about effective oral written communication. Those students are all practicing. At the graduation level, the 12th graders who are graduating, they do a project which is called the senior project. And that's a little higher stakes. They have to do that at a really high level in order to graduate. And I'll show you pictures of each of those. These are our student demonstrations during expo, pictures of what students do, projects that they've worked on, conversations they're having with people about their learning, presenting and speaking in front of the entire class about learning that they've done, sharing a game that they designed as part of a critical thinking, problem-solving experience. Some of the students' demonstrations were on their computer. Many of the students dressed really, really well for this day. I mean, this is one of our students who was just like really proud that he was presenting on this particular day. And these are all students grade six through 12. Every one of them did these presentations, and they were really incredible. That's at the practice level, and we're practicing this throughout the year at the end of every marking period. We also have at the graduate level, what does it look like when seniors have developed this skill and now they're saying, "We're ready for college and career." And these are some of the pictures from some of the presentations last year for the seniors. How many are familiar with the senior projects? So several of us are, and actually, some of us are looking at their daughter, who is on the left and just did a beautiful job with hers. And these are some of our seniors who graduated last year with the display they shared, but they also earlier had done a speech in front of a group of teachers, and the speech was evaluated, and they also wrote a paper, and their paper was evaluated. So all three parts were a part of the senior project. So the face of education is changing throughout the state. It's exciting in Winuski to be a part of the lead of that change and figuring out how do we make this real for all students. And we're very, very proud to be working through that and making it a reality. Thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
This is a pretty large change that we've got going on in the school. So one of the focuses the board has had over the last year and a half is to bring this to the community because you're not necessarily going to have sons and daughters come home with an A, B, C. It's going to be, "I'm proficient or I'm not." So, you know, we've got to work through that. Class structures may be different. They may look different than it is now. So try to keep you in tune as much as we can by bringing these through this discussion. That was our intent.
I have a concern, I've had a concern several years, about life skills, children learning life skills. This is such a mixed culture. Many of the children are... And I'm sure their parents as well are not familiar with how things work here. So are those issues being addressed along with this program? Like learning life skills, like, you know, applying some learnings or, you know, all that? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I'll give you one example. One of the graduation proficiencies that we're looking at right now is, "I make personal decisions using concepts of financial literacy." So the concept of, you know, "I really have to become proficient in financial, I have to understand finances to be successful in life." Yeah, so these are being built in. We are looking at this globally to see what are the real, what are the content standards that support the graduation expectations and really prepare them. Good question.
Thank you, thank you.
It won't be perfect, but we're working on it. We're intentionally thinking about this.
But this is the first time that's being addressed in the education system. And I think that's one of the things I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
Okay. Leon, thank you very much, and Sean, appreciate it. We'll continue to bring this forward as we get the opportunity. In the public comments section of our meeting tonight, you've noticed and hopefully have tried on some of the hardware we have out in the front room here. So if we can, I'll turn this over to Deek for the police uniform discussion.
Come and Jim... And they're grabbing the food, which is what police do really, really well. So our police officers have worn all kinds of different uniforms. And we want to go to one standard, everybody looks alike. So I want to show you the three we're looking at and just have you clap for the one you like most.
This is a fashion thing.
Where's the music?
But not necessarily the best looking. Let's start with Jim. Jim, you want to... Jim has a polo shirt, so not the whole body, and it's casual. Turd. Now let's look at Tom's uniform. It's more traditional. He's always our funniest. So, that's Tom. And then Scott. Scott has gray. In case we wanted to move from black to gray. Okay? Now, Scott will show you his vest. So... So, we buy these separate for the protection. Okay? So, the protection can go in that vest rather than the ones that you've tried on earlier. Okay? So, just clap for the one you like.
We can clap for all of the purses.
We can clap for all of the purses. Who likes Jim with the casual shirt? How about Tom with the more formal and traditional shirt? Tom in the middle. And how about Scott, who likes the gray better than the black? Jim is the winner for tonight. So, we're going to, we're going to take that into account as we begin to change into uniforms. So, thank you very much. Guys, thank you very much.
So, next we have under the public comments, we do have a proclamation and I'll let Seth preface that for us.
Yeah, great. So, one thing that's been a theme today is making sure Winuski is a welcoming community and considering all of our different residents and their backgrounds and making sure we're continuing to be a welcoming community in the future. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that, I think, when we get to the MOU. But we have drafted a proclamation that we would like to present to the school board in hopes that we can have a joint agreement upon it. And I know it's not a formal item of business, but hope maybe you can consider it for the next meeting that would recognize September as September the 12th, which of course has passed. However, it was Welcoming Cities Week. So, if you humor me for a few minutes, I'll read half of it and then pass it over if you could read half of it.
Let me translate that first piece.
So, we'll read and we can come back and get some questions. Okay? So, proclamation recognizing Welcoming Week 2015 between the City of Winuski and the Winuski Incorporated School District dated the 16th day of September 2015. Our community's success depends on making sure that all Winuski residents feel welcome here. And today, as throughout Winuski's history, new arrivals are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. This week, we honor the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together across Winuski. During National Welcoming Week, we invite all Winuski residents to join this movement of communities nationwide by renewing our commitment to our core American values by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our community the kind of place where diverse people from around the world feel valued and want to put down roots. Regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are united in our efforts to build a stronger Winuski. By recognizing the contributions that we all make to creating a vibrant culture and a growing economy, we make our community more prosperous, more inclusive to all who call it home. Let us come together to build communities where every resident has the opportunity to contribute at his or her best. Now, therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in us as councilors of the City of Winuski and trustees of the Winuski School Board, we do hereby proclaim the week of September 12th, 2015, Welcoming Week in Winuski, Vermont, and call upon the people of Winuski to join us in building a stronger, more vibrant, and truly welcoming community for all of our residents.
Great. So, we'll pass along a copy of that for, hopefully, folks to consider. Thank you.
It was beautiful, Ray.
Thank you. Yes, very well done.
Ray, Ray Coffey. So, the next item on the agenda, the one that our joint meeting is all about is discussion about our, we'll call it an MOU, but it's a memorandum of understanding between the city and the school. One of the items that we've been trying to do over the past few years, and we've got it pretty well fine-tuned, is how do we make sure that we don't run programs in the city that conflict, not conflict, but, but duplicate something we're working on in the school? How can we make sure that for the taxpayers' money that we spend, we spend it at best we can once across a multitude of items? So, that's pretty much the focus that we started out on with the, with the MOU several years ago. Deek, do you want to put some background?
Yeah, and as we did that, we moved to not only, how do we avoid duplicating, but how do we work together to support? This is kind of a high-level framework. We then go from here and work hard on all of the details as staff and as committee. So...
Right. Any discussion from anyone on the items in here?
We're certainly excited. I think there's a recognition on the city's behalf and hopefully you've noticed an increase in interest and investment, you know, in terms of our programming and the way that we're, we're trying to reach out to youth in the community outside of the school building too. The growth of a young person does not start and stop at the doorway of the school and we're trying to be very supportive of the great things you guys are doing. You know, I, I think everybody here feels really strongly. It was a great question asked earlier. We really demonstrate success when kids are successful both inside and outside the school building. So, we've got a lot of interest in seeing that move forward and it is really exciting to move past, we're agreeing upon who's going to take care of snow. And we're talking about programming like Thrive and the after-school support. So, we're really thrilled by that. And I think, you know, our school's not traditional and neither is our community. And you guys have really worked hard to be something that's a, a real capturing point for folks who are thinking about moving the community and think about staying in the community. So, big kudos to all the work that you've done there. So, really exciting. I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to...
I just want to thank you all for the, the work that you do and I thought the, the presentation tonight was extraordinary. And, and I, and I believe that some of these concepts are captured in the, in the MOU, but I just want to emphasize my interest in, in ensuring that as part of the community-based learning opportunities that we staff partners to, to figure out how students can earn credit or demonstrate proficiencies by doing work with the city. So, as part of the teen employment program or serving on a commission, I think figuring out ways that we can ensure that those opportunities for youth are aligned with your expectations and that students have an opportunity to earn credit because of the valuable time that they're contributing to the city, I think, is a really great opportunity to, to, again, set an example for the rest of the state about what partnership can do for student opportunity. So, thanks for the work that you do and I'm excited to continue working together.
Your willingness in the city to hire the students is a big deal. A big, big deal.
And provide space for them to be able to join.
Yeah, I wanted to say I appreciate the encouragement to support a range of housing options and support for housing as well as support of streets and public transportation. It's not necessarily something that you would think of in terms of education, but they're very important to our overarching goal of having a successful community. And I just appreciate that the school board is supportive of, of that and to the, to the point of calling on us to move forward with those.
We have to do it together. We have no choices. Great. So, at this point, any other, any other comments? Okay. On the part of the board, I would accept a motion to approve the MOU as written. Second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, adopted.
Seth can take a vote of the council?
I was really proud of everybody for not voting when the question came up. I would accept a motion from the council on the memorandum of understanding between the City of Winuski and the Winuski Incorporated School District as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Robert. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to go in positive too. Those opposed? Motion carries.
So, we normally, just for the record, since it'll be your minutes, we normally don't have the mayor vote, so having the mayor vote is kind of an, is important to us. So, if that could be reflected in the minutes that the, the mayor also voted in the affirmative...
It's extra love.
Then it's the, it's the extra love.
The hug of the mayor.
Okay, very good.
A hug.
Thank you, Brenda, for capturing that.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Okay, so we've got signature copies coming around the table.
And we'll take one and then you have one and we'll both have one.
And then, at that point, we've, our city counterparts here will take their leave or stay if you want. It's up to you. And then, I think we're, we, this would be probably a good point from, from that perspective. We don't have a ton left, so if you want to stay, that works.
Or if not, go home to your families.
Great. So, we're going to move on through the agenda now. At this point, we'll move to, I do have one adjustment in the agenda to do and that is to remove the first reading of the transportation policy only because it got dropped in the transition when we sent them, when we sent the material out. So, it wasn't in the package, just the recommended changes at a high level. So, we'll keep the animal dissection piece in and we'll move that one and we'll push it out to our next, we'll do the first reading the next time we get together.
Tori, can you pass me that?
Of course.
All right. Item six here, the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second? Any discussion on the consent?
Just one thing I consent. So, we talked a little bit about the wellness and, and policy. And we had talked about the physical activity goals, right? And so, two things. One, there's this little typo, small potatoes, but it says use of the school on, on number two, section C, under the physical, well, whole child and school wellness policy. It says, um, community, use of the school facilities by community member for physical activities is encouraged. I presume that's plural.
Yep.
Or meant to be plural. And I'm trying to remember, what did we end up talking about in, in section B there, 2B, about 30 minutes a day outside of physical education classes in or outside of the school day? And then the outside of the school day seemed like it was just sort of more voluntary rather than during the school day for kids' brains to get some blood. Because, because all the, all the examples in the parentheses are during school rather than after school. And 30 minutes a day outside of the physical, or rather, outside of the school day sort of implies not during the school day, as I recall. So, I know we talked about it. I don't remember how we ended up.
We had a good conversation around it.
Do you remember that one?
Yeah, I don't remember how we left. I thought that we determined that there was a difference between that one and then in C where it talks about some of those other things. Interscholastic intramurals, clubs, community-based programs. And so, the, the B is, is really about the requirement from the state that you have that time in the day. There is no requirement to provide anything outside of the school day. But you wanted in the, in your policy, you wanted to cover both of them.
Well, actually, what I remember doing is that we were, we were talking about, because we actually wanted, since, since we can't really, we, since we know that physical activity is important, that we wanted it in the school day because that's what we govern in a way. And that, and the conversation, what I remember was that, well, that's a little hard to expect to change scheduling to make sure that extra 30 minutes, but then we realized that, well, it doesn't have to be 30, it could be 15-minute segments, 10, three 10-minute segments, so we could break it up and make it doable where it wouldn't necessarily change the means or change the, the scheduling. But that we all felt that it was pretty important that they actually did get 30 minutes inside of school in addition...
Outside of PE.
Outside of PE. That that is what's best for all kids.
Right, and that phrase there, "or outside of the school day," makes it sound like it can be outside of the school day.
Of the school day, yeah.
I mean, if the intent is, right, exactly. If the intent is to do it during the school day, then, then I'm not sure what that phrase means.
Right.
Because as you say, C is outside the school day.
Yes.
So, B should be inside the school day, if I'm understanding the intent.
Well, I think that also leaves you the ability to, to consider that, not the intramural, but the, the extracurriculars, the, the sports that are done after the school day is, could be considered part of that if you're not doing it during the school day.
Right.
That would be outside the school day itself, all of those activities.
So, do you want, I mean, if you strike, just to go to the language and try to clarify, if you struck...
In or outside of the school day.
And just put during the school day.
Yeah.
Outside of PE classes during the school day, that would capture what you were looking for?
That forces it to be inside sometime during, during the day when you have them.
Six or seven hours.
So, if that's what the board wants, that, I think that would fall under a technical correction and that could be made and you could still approve the policy tonight based on the, the... based on the, the, I would make that correction and then that, um, plural.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jenny, you okay with it?
Yep.
Ladies? No?
Could be dance, ten minutes, you know? Three times.
Yeah, so the motion on the table is to accept the entire consent agenda. I think we get into nested, nested, uh...
Motions?
Motions here at this point. But, uh, so with the corrections that we just adjusted, with the plural, the plurality and the change to during the, during the school day, we'll adopt a consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion carries to accept the consent agenda. Uh, with the adjustments that Sean, you'll make those and put it into the final copy. Alright, uh, item seven here, the monitoring report. And so, I've put together and we actually had to move out of the September agenda, which was the superintendent, um, uh, evaluation. I, I put together a, a form to show that the, all of the monitoring reports that we've done. This is the, now the first time around for the, the second time around the first one. So, what we've got here in the monitoring report, um, just a discussion here, um, any... I, I did have a, I did have a question here, Sean, in, um, uh, in your interpret, not in your interpretation. Yes, I, I believe it would be in, in the interpretation of two. Section two, which is use methods of collecting, reviewing, transmitting and storing student data, student family information that follow protect. As we historically have had this, this was a lock on a file cabinet inside a lock on a door. What do we have in place from an electronic standpoint? Not necessarily just passwords on computers, but do we do anything with security from an IT standpoint? And is that updated on a, on a monitored or updated on a regular basis?
Well, for our most sensitive documents, there's secure servers that are only operated by the IT department at, at school. So those are secure, separate servers, um, that have higher levels of security around them, firewalls and so forth. Um, and then we also have, um, tape backup that's built into the servers so that if something was to happen, um, to that data, that we have a way of retrieving it still.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you want, I can get, I, I don't have all the specifics with me on, in terms of what that security looks like, except in general having, you know, firewalls and having more secure servers and, and isolated servers for, uh, more sensitive information.
Would it, would it be something that the state or federal government supplies, like towards?
No, no, it's up to the locals to figure that out.
We will all know.
The only thing with the government is E-rate, you know, you get some reimbursement and you have to follow the rules around access to...
But do they recommend that you use, that they don't do that?
No. No, they may, they make recommendations about access to the internet and, and what you should block and what you should allow. But around this type of stuff in terms of access to sensitive materials, no.
Though it's not necessarily high-profile, you can't make a lot of money with it. It's, you know, the hack possibility. Um, I'm wondering if maybe, would it be useful, though I'm not necessarily all on the tech end, would it be an IT focus on learning item somewhere during the year? Just to understand, so we can have a high level of...
It's actually on the agenda, focus on learning. So I can add that as a question to get answered during that if you'd like.
At least to give us an idea of what's there.
It might be the, uh, next month, actually.
What, what's in place, just to reinforce it, so.
But focus on learning is about what we're doing for teaching, right?
Uh, right. Well, it's going to be an opportunity because we have, uh, I'd say substantially, um, changed our IT department in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Um, to support all the technology in the building, so that would be a part of it. The tech integration and the one-to-one and, and the learning is the biggest part of it.
Okay.
But I think we could, it would fold into that to answer this question.
And it doesn't have to be long, it doesn't have to be deep, just to touch it and...
The basics.
But the rest of it ties into the data managers and data that we've got, so.
Okay.
Alright, um, any other, uh, any other comments on the?
That's good.
Under the last piece, under, um, this all comes in with a "not", right? Leave students, parents, guardians, community uninformed in writing of the policy without a method to be heard.
Right.
So this is kind of the escalation path. You note at the bottom, um, our procedure 105, which is public complaints about personnel. That one specifically gets to a person, a, a personnel issue where I, uh, I've got a complaint, I as a parent have a complaint about a teacher, or I as a parent have a complaint about a principal. Does that one though get at the, um, an issue where it may not necessarily be a personnel complaint?
Well, I think then you would be looking at whatever pertinent policy there would be for the, for, at the board level. So if it was a complaint about, um, the math program, then you'd be looking at, um, first of all, kind of the, the chain of command and communication. And if that came to you, what would you do with that? Where would you direct that person? But then if it came all the way up, that would fall under curriculum.
Curriculum.
Yeah. So I think it would depend on, on what the, the actual concern complaint is. And then you'd have, we'd have to determine which policy it's related to.
Cause the standard piece would be a complaint about personnel. That's probably seventy percent of your... Okay, alright, any other comments? Second time around here, so we're now at a point where we're going to see these probably starting next year, maybe once a year, depending on how we, how we move through the ends. I want to make sure we have time to get the ends squared up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this will again go as part of the evaluation for next year as we wrap it in, so.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um, do, uh, I would accept a motion to accept the monitoring report for policy two dot one as written.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of accepting? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I thought we weren't doing seconds anymore.
What's that?
I thought we weren't doing seconds.
You know, I, it's habit.
It's just fun.
Jay Lammber beat that into me to the point where I don't know that it'll go along.
Another point of process would be that it wasn't because we were doing two-month cycles on this. This was not listed to be approved tonight in the agenda.
This is the first read?
Yeah.
Okay. No, this was the first read.
Right, cause we had, we were sticking to that two-month cycle.
First read, so we'll have this come in in a consent agenda the next time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, we, does that make sense Brenda?
So, is somebody gonna, do you still have the motion on the table? Or is somebody withdrawing the motion?
It's a withdrawal.
It has to be. You have made the motion.
I did. Well, you made it. No, I made the motion.
You made the motion.
I did, yeah.
Tori.
Tori.
Tori, no, I know the difference.
So do we move to withdraw it? Do we need to re...
I would make a motion, but it's not my meeting.
Okay, so I make a motion to withdraw the motion, um, to accept the monitoring report, policy two point one.
Okay, a second?
We don't need a second.
Sorry.
I'm not doing it.
Are we really not going to do seconds anymore? That's going to be weird.
The freeness of the second joke.
I knew you were going to say that.
Any, any other discussion? Alright, so we'll see this in the consent agenda for approval as we get into next month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Seven B. Julian, you're going to get me though. Coming along. So, the next item here is just a discussion point and that is setting budget parameters and budget building timetable. On the back of the, I believe if you printed it out, on the back of the monitoring report is the timetable, uh, that's been tentatively laid out. Gets, starts in, uh, end of November with the first pass and then as we go through December, four meetings. It's pretty much the schedule that we've done.
December twenty-third.
I was going to say, nope, nope, please, uh, December twenty-third is on there. If needed. I mean, in the past, I think the last year we got through in three. So, in the bottom piece of the report.
Yes, it is.
Wednesday, it's the last day?
Yeah, it's Friday, Friday, Christmas this year.
Okay.
Are we bringing buddies or are we just gonna, are you just opening it up?
I would, I would like to, A, open it up to anybody who wants to come, but I do want to challenge the board to have someone in the room that you can point to that you brought to help with the discussions, if you can.
Carpool? Okay, but it would be great to open it, because it'd be nice to see if we can get...
Yeah, so it would be nice to, to get the extra knowledge of the process.
Okay.
Alright, and then the other piece, setting the budget parameters. I think in this case, we are pretty well, um, pretty well, um, established in where we can go if we want to make sure that we avoid, uh, penalties to the, to the city and, and with this, so. You can see the allowable growth at two point seven five is the max. That is everything. Salaries, benefits, programs, you name it, it's all wrapped in. The Vermont average being down at just below two tells me that we've got the luxury of going to two point seven five. I think that'll be a bonus and a blessing to the, to the community. Our, uh, our, um, focus then is going to be what, how do we get a budget inside this? We've got negotiations this year as well. That's going to all line up together, so. Is that?
Yeah, so I, I put this together because I just wanted you to, you know, you have a law at the top, recently, uh, passed in, in the spring. And then in the yellow is just showing you, uh, you know, our local, um, like Mike said, the two point seven five. And then the, uh, the threshold there is the, um, uh, cost per pupil and then the allowable increase. And then in total dollars over to the right and what we can, uh, add if we were to go to that maximum amount, uh, of increase for FY seventeen. And then the total amount that the state of Vermont is, uh, budgeting to increase in spending for, for education. The one thing that I would, a couple of things I would point out. First, the allowable growth percentage across the state is between zero and five point five. Okay? The, the piece that I think is important for us and maybe should, should, um, I would suggest would require some continued advocacy is that while you look at that threshold and we are at thirteen thousand and a hundred and thirty-nine per student, the Vermont average is still well over a thousand per student because for years we had been in the bottom quartile of spending. And while we've made ground and I think there's been a commitment by the board and the, the, the city, um, and, and the taxpayers in supporting the past couple of budgets, there, there, there's still a discrepancy there. And, and while we, uh, you know, we're kind of middle of the road in that zero to, to five point five, there are, there are many, um, school districts, um, that have the ability to spend more per pupil than we do. Within their threshold.
Yeah, because they started there.
Cause they started, so it's kind of this.
Yeah, totally, right. Feels a little unfair.
So creativity, uh... What's that? That was.
Well, the good news is we have really good, I mean, we have clear boundaries.
Yeah.
You know, we, we know where, um, where we can go and where we can't.
Well, I think that goes both negotiation and budget.
Yeah.
When you put them both together, so that's... And the, uh, the penalties for exceeding, are those laid out? I know, I thought that was a tax, uh, penalty back on the community.
It is. Yeah, I, 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 I can't quote the, the percentage or the amount, but yes, it's a penalty. Anything beyond the threshold and it's, um, it's, it's, it's a pretty sizable penalty. Alright.
So, yeah, so, so that, I mean, that's going to change the negotiation discussion.
No, it focuses it. Doesn't change it, it focuses it, puts it very much pointed to where your endpoints are.
Yeah.
The challenge being, of course, as, as we all know, our, our teachers and the salary schedule is in the same boat
Yeah.
with this in terms of, um, the county.
Right.
And, uh, and, you know, that's one of our goals, teacher retention and then keeping teachers so that they grow in the system and we develop effective teachers over time because they've tend to have left after, um, you know, five to ten years.
Right.
And, and so we will, I mean, it focuses and it, and it pushes us to be creative and how, how do we, uh, how do we help to, uh, create a salary schedule that honors that commitment to competitiveness at the same time within a challenging financial landscape?
If you always do what you've always done, you're always going to get what you always got.
Yeah.
So, we've got to be doing something a little bit different and be a little creative to see where there's something available, so.
I do want to say here publicly that I feel like this, these limitations, uh, sent down by the state is basically a way to freeze inequity in educational spending across the state.
It did not take care of the inequality across.
And, and just sort of like cement it, you know?
Yep.
Sort of locks it right in.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just stick with equal, inequality.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay?
And in some ways, I think that, that, that's part of the intent is to step back, slow it down so that all these other elements in the spirit of Act forty-six can start to take hold. And that there should be eff, efficiencies that will be realized over time with the, uh, accelerated merger options and so forth. But it doesn't, I agree with you, it doesn't help us the way that we would like to be helped, I think.
Yeah.
For our students.
I, I, you know, I, I, I agree with that. I, I would like to though focus on the fact that people go to work and enjoy work for a lot of different reasons.
Absolutely.
I think we've got to be, first and foremost, have a climate and a culture that people want to come to.
Absolutely.
We do have to get the salaries lined up. I don't think there's any doubt about that. But I think we've made some huge steps in getting that climate and culture squared up.
Yep.
And I think that in and of itself can help carry us through at least the tough negotiations. This can't last forever. This can't last forever.
Right.
There's got to be a way that, that this gets, the equity gets, you know, resolved, so.
And then also making sure we can care for our student population and meeting them where they are and the needs and the complex needs that we, we, we are holding and helping them hold, yeah.
The burden on the teaching staff is huge, there's no doubt about that. We train good ones and then they go off to other districts and that's not right. So, we can fix that. Alright, so you kind of got your, at least first pass marching.
Yep.
Rebecca knows where the roof is.
We know where the roof is, we still have, uh, you know, as you know, from the budget assumptions, we still have unknowns as we're moving through it.
Um, you know, so we do the best to forecast those and build the models and everything,
but we don't get firm, you know, whether it's healthcare, whether it's revenue numbers until, um, you know, late in the process.
Yep.
But we know how, we know how to work with that.
Healthcare would be a big deal and we get that one relatively early in the process, so.
Yep.
Okay, good. And good, good luck with that. We'll see, we'll see in December.
Yeah, we'll see November thirtieth.
Just to be, uh, just so I can understand, so, so, so right now, Sean, we don't know what our, what the current contract does, uh, to our budget next year?
No, for teachers. We do for support staff.
We do.
Yes.
And we will have a budget before we have a contract for next year. So we're kind of in a bit of an awkward spot of making some level of assumptions that we then have to figure out how to work in.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just makes it just so much more interesting to do it that way.
That's why we got Jen on board. That's why we got the, we got Jen on board.
Really ups the ante around critical thinking and problem solving. Someone could get the GX belt.
That's right.
I don't want it.
Yeah, you're going to get it. With pride.
Exactly, alright, anything else on that? I think you, you stated it very eloquently in the inequity piece. Appreciate that. Alright, onward hope, student report to the board.
Before they start, I think it is only appropriate. Well, not even the GX champ of the day, because they, you know, they both have that already. But it is Ladania's birthday.
On your birthday, you're the GX champ, whoop, whoop!
Seventeen today.
Bravo, bravo.
Yeah!
Well, should we sing?
Beginning her senior year, yeah, I think we should sing.
Happy, ready, no, he's the one, ready?
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Ladania. Happy birthday to you.
And here we are, we forgot the cake.
Yeah, where's the cake?
It was lasagna cake.
Thank you.
They're brownies? The lasagna, the cheesy cake.
Student report.
Alrighty.
With that, we will move forward.
Okay, so this is our first meeting of the year. Students are back, we're back in school. I'm a junior and she's a senior and it's just so hard to believe right now. Um, so before we get into school, I'll talk a little bit about what's been going on this summer. Uh, we had a few students who have gone to Governor's Institute this summer. We had, um, Monae McCray who went to Governor's Institute of Arts. She's also nominated as GX Champ, uh, the first day back from, uh, from school. Uh, for her dedication for applying to GIA. Uh, I went to China for Governor's Institute of Asian Cultures and it was an absolutely amazing experience. Wow! Um, another thing is that elementary and early middle schoolers had a chance to come back to school for summer camp. Uh, elementary definitely had a chance to learn more while they took some time out of their summer to come to school for three, four weeks and just learn more about what, learn more, you know? And, uh, middle schoolers have also been participating in this, uh, really new and unique summer kind of program. Not sure what the acronym was, but, uh, sixth graders, uh, seventh graders, eighth graders all got to participate in summer programs that were all in the Winuski, Burlington area. Some programs included clothing design, weaving, uh, cleanup, and more about eventually friendly programs and just more about having fun and learning new hobbies and activities that you can do. So that also happened during the summer. Uh, there's also the Youth Leadership Institute that I bring up again for another year, um, founded by the Nellie May Education Foundation. This year, we had six students from Winuski and Burlington, uh, go to Babson College in Wellesley, Massachusetts for the Third Annual Youth Leadership Institute. A quick reminder, the YLI is basically an institute where, uh, sites from all over New England come together to talk about student voice and, uh, just school innovation for creating, uh, new projects and programs where students can have a say in their learning and really push forward to become twenty-first century learners. And so.
Is that six each or six total?
Um, three from each school.
Cool.
So we had, uh, me, Riley, and Ennis, uh, we were all juniors and we all, Representative Winuski and three students from Burlington came as well. And so I was on the planning team again, just for fun and planning it, you know?
On the twentieth, there was a back to school barbecue. The barbecue was a good opportunity for new students to make new connections and for all previous students to reconnect with their beloved teachers. It was a pretty successful day. There was a school-wide wellness assembly on August twenty-eighth. Uh, some cool student videos represented about innovative schools all the way in California. An inspirational video by Khan Academy and a video from Winuski students and teachers sharing what they're excited for this year. Many of our new faculty were also introduced at that time. Auditions for the upcoming play have ended. The play will be Snow White and the Ten Dwarfs.
Oh.
The ten, yeah.
We're innovative.
Yes. Uh, we, uh, as Rainbow mentioned, we have started.
Is there a cap on that?
Dwarf cap. Get it?
Two point seven five.
Fuck you.
Um, as Rainbow mentioned, we have started the school year with our first GX Champ, Monae McCray. She was nominated by Matthew Webb for her time at the Governor's Institute. Uh, a new advisory system has started to kind of replace, take over the TA time. Where TA time was a time where students, uh, hung out with students of their own grade or do homework. It'll be turned into a much more student-supported time. Lucas Dunn is the leader of this change. Uh, the math lab has started. It, if you don't know what it is, um, it's basically all of the math, uh, programs from foundations of algebra up to IMP three. They have been mixed and shoved into a room together. It's been, uh, not negatively. The math lab has received some mixed feedback from students. Some students say they like it because of the independence and, uh, the four teachers that are.
There's no teachers in there?
There's four teachers.
Oh, in, okay.
Yeah, in the room, mhm. They have, some students, uh, like that, but some students are having trouble adapting to the new system. Uh, the elementary had their picture day today. Middle and high school will have their picture day on October second. And on to sports. Uh, both middle school soccer teams have games on the seventeenth. They play at BFA Fairfax at three thirty. The varsity football team has a game on the eighteenth. They play at Spalding at seven. Varsity girls soccer team has a game on the nineteenth. They play at Ennisburg at eleven. The varsity boys soccer team has a game on the nineteenth. They play at United Christian at twelve. Homecoming week is next week. We're not really sure about what we're doing for school pride, but homecoming weekend is sure to be great. On Friday, the twenty-fifth, the middle school soccer teams have game at BFA Fair, against BFA Fairfax at four thirty. And the football team has a game against Saint Joseph at seven. Both varsity soccer teams have games against Lake Region the next day, the twenty-sixth. Uh, the boys play at eleven while the girls play at one thirty.
And so there's a lot more to come, uh, this year. We have actually a lot of things to announce in the beginning of the year. Um, so the high school is planning on having two New York field trips. Um, October twelfth to October fourteenth, there's a Partnership for Change sponsored field trip where a group of twenty students and teachers from both Burlington and Winuski are going to the New York City area to check out schools and their innovative programs.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, I think they're visiting about six to eight, uh, middle, elementary, high schools.
Yeah.
Uh, with all sorts of unique programs, all in the diverse Brooklyn, Bronx area.
Yep.
And there's also another New York field trip about on April fifth and six, which is the Winuski High School's business department.
Mm.
And this trip is, um, basically a group of twelve students and two teachers are going to the New York City area to learn about the businesses such as Wall Street businesses, uh, watch a Broadway show. Hopefully we're, we're planning on watching The Lion King, hopefully. And, um, experience the city life and students will learn how to plan the trip, fundraise on their own using the school store, selling coupon books and selling raffle tickets. I am also selling so, and fundraising, so please help me. Um, and so there's that. And, uh, I will also be, starting from this meeting, I'll try to report out on what state board students as well.
Nice, that's exciting.
Yeah.
Uh, I just had a meeting yesterday and I'm slowly getting the hang of all these rules and acts and laws and all those things, especially Act forty-six.
Yes.
And, um, my third meeting was yesterday and a cool thing that's happened yesterday was that we recently approved of the Elmore-Morristown, uh, student, no, school district union. And, uh, we'll be let, they'll be letting their people vote on whether or not they would like the union.
Marge.
And merge, uh, by November. And so that's very exciting and it's interesting to see all these acts finally being in place and really accelerating the merges of districts. Um, otherwise it's pretty cool work so far. Um, and two more things, uh, the band, uh, every three years, we go to the Big E, which is in Springfield, Massachusetts for Vermont Day. And it's, the Big E is a huge event and amusement park, so our band goes to the Big E every three years to march and the parade and also enjoy the rides.
Wait, Vermont Day is in Massachusetts?
I don't know. I, I don't know why they have a Vermont Day, but.
They like it so much.
And they have like, they might have like North Carolina Day and New York Day.
It's a, it's a marketing strategy.
I guess.
Just like there's Massachusetts Day at Vermont, Skim House.
Not sure.
Oh, oh, I see it. Oh, I got it.
Not sure, but, and, uh, finally the elementary has their first walk to school event on October seventh and potentially with band members playing along.
Oh, that's so fun. You'll see that. I love that.
And so that's a lot of events, but we're expecting a lot this year.
Is that, what did you say, is that seven thirty? Is that what it is?
Uh, yes.
Meet down at Rite Aid at seven thirty.
Rite Aid, seven thirty.
Yep, on October seventh.
Alright.
Thank you.
It is, it is, yeah.
Good. At, uh, at some point along the way here, we're gonna have to talk about a succession for a student rep. We'll be losing next year. And then, uh, just on the, on the barbecue, I know there were a lot of people. Do you get the sense that it was as well attended as last year's?
Yes, I think it was similar. We, we, uh, the best numbers we had were right around a thousand that we served, which was similar to last year.
It's great. And the tables outside and the tent was fabulous. It was, it's just nice evening.
Yes, it was very good.
Alright, and thank you, appreciate it. Um, again, we moved the transportation reading out and we'll take the animal dissection. If you saw the, the notes in there, it's pretty much.
Are we still doing that, do you guys?
Well, it's interesting, we were talking about it today, right? And I was asking them and they said that they hadn't done, um, you know, uh, anything outside of a virtual dissection since like sixth grade, right?
Sixth grade, sixth grade.
So it's really has moved to doing it all virtually.
Okay. Do most high schools still do this?
Uh, no, I, I.
Do you know, is that your experience?
My experience is that it was the same. People were moving towards the virtual.
Okay, alright, good. Cause it was a weird thing.
But there are still some who, you know, really believe in the value of the real dissection. You know, they follow the procedures.
I mean, mechanically speaking, it's a delicate operation. You need, you need to be careful.
Yes, very much so.
It's very memorable.
Thank you for that. Alright, any, uh, any comments on the rest of the, the policy itself? Alright, so with that, since this is a discussion item only, we won't get into that trap. See that as the second reading when it comes back in.
Alright.
Alright. Governance investment.
Hmm.
Wanted to lay this one out so that we can make sure that when we do two things. One is the budget will be coming and we'll have a line item in there for our own education. The other one is, is just a brief discussion if we can on what kinds of things have we done and what can we do if there's something different that we can do. Sean, if I remember the line item, it was just short of nine thousand dollars.
Correct.
Eighty-nine hundred.
And I don't believe that we have, um, consumed all of that at any given year. That's, we're leaving it. We do the Lake Maury. P.S., I sent out an email today, Jen, for, um, the Lake Maury Retreat, always a good, um, investment, at least in the time for the education that we get.
I can add one piece to it.
Yep.
Based on our Winuski Talent Show, they are now going to be doing a talent show on Thursday night at the V S B A conference. So school boards are going to have to, um,
Grow down.
show up to that.
I'm still not going.
The stack, come on! That can get you there.
You shouldn't have told them.
So we, we were a model and, uh, the V S P staff, I guess, have been watching a lot of Jimmy Fallon leaps, lip syncing, uh, to prepare themselves for that. But just had to put that out there. So whoever goes has to deal.
So what my side is, there's, there's a fall and a spring conference, V S A and V S B A. I think that in the spring, it's, it's also the special educator, uh, professional group that sponsors these. And they're both great opportunities for professional development for boards, uh, superintendents and other administrators.
And as we look at our policy governance, um, our journey over the last three years, I'll call it even four years, um, is there any other education that we need to keep us moving or to move us more solidly where we're going? I mean, do we?
Do we ever do the financial piece?
What's that?
Do we ever do the financial literacy piece around audits and so forth?
Uh, we believe we have done that one yet, no.
No, we didn't do it.
That would be.
Let's do that one.
Yep. Yep, that'll be, that'll be good. That'll still, I think, you know, that's, that's good, solid education for us. Anything policy governance specific?
Cause I think like that next layer, you know, that we've sort of got this thing.
We got in a.
Good, yeah, you know, but I feel like, it may be, you know, like, right, what's the continued learning, sustainable learning around that?
Hate to stay there.
So that also as we are, you know, we do move in and out, um, board members making sure that we have a, a way of training within, um, to get new board members up and running around it, but so that we also have a deeper knowledge of it. So we have different layers of knowledge around policy governance, so we're growing.
Yeah, and can we get that locally? Is that something that, uh,
Val?
Val can, can do maybe, you know, two oh one, policy governance two oh one, take that neck. What do, what do we, what do we do from here?
Yeah.
What can we do? How can we do this better?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Just even in like, as we go forward with our end statements and figuring out if, if we ever have to change them or add to them or like, you know?
And is it possible not to do it during a board meeting? Cause we do a lot, you, you know, just thinking about the depth of it
Right.
and, and having the, you know, having us be able to dig a little deeper, longer periods of time, just better learning.
Figuring out one day.
That's what I would, you know, when I, I researched this last year and looked for policy governance trainings and workshops and there wasn't a lot out there.
Right.
And, um, so, you know, the, the founder of policy governance, the Carver, Carver, they run some stuff down in, in Georgia and I went to the.
Georgia.
Georgia, thank you.
Yeah, we'll be going down.
And so I went to like the policy governance, uh, one oh one when I, when I first started and that was great, but I'm also feeling like that next level would be really helpful for me and I certainly think for the four, four of you as well. So, I, I, I can, I can, uh, look into that and see what we, but I agree with you, doing it in an hour or even two hours at a board meeting is not, you need to, it needs to be sustained and, and get it, you know, into depth.
And not eight o'clock at night. Afternoon, because by the end of the day, we're just wiped.
Right.
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 So, and practice, somehow being able to practice and, and collaborate and communicate around that would be great.
So I think taking out of that is.
Small groups?
Right. So I think taking out of that though, I think it's, it's definitely, we all see the need to move forward.
Yep.
Rather than getting stagnant where we are so that we can, you know, if we can try to see what we can find.
Yep.
Be nice if it's local and we can all take it and all, all understand the same, or not understand it the same way, hear the same words. How you take it away is the value of having everybody in the room.
Yeah.
So. Alright, that would be good. So we'll, we'll, I think, bottom line, we can at least leave the same budget line item, dollar value in there. I don't think we're gonna spend it and not that we have to, just because it's there. I think we just need to find a way to make sure we move forward.
And the, and the other things that we do have the, on the, kind of on the books in terms of development is the Act forty-six training and
Oh, good.
that will start in October and then we're planning on doing a follow-up with that in the spring.
So that will be at the board meeting?
Yes, and that comes out of the government investment budget too.
Yeah, okay, perfect, that's great. Yeah.
Right.
Who's gonna do that?
Uh, Nicole Mase is coming next month and then we'll see after that.
She's been, she says she's been doing three a week. Yeah.
Wow.
But they're building a team of people that are going out and doing the, doing all of those too, so they're trying to build capacity around it.
Yeah, good, good for her.
Alright.
Good for us.
Very good. Um, then, uh, community engagement, any recent stuff?
Best school barbecue.
Yep, that was, that was a big deal. That was always a wonderful, wonderful experience. Uh, Jen, you were, last time we talked, you had gotten involved with some of the city committees or?
No, not yet, no.
Oh, okay, that's coming to a theater near you.
Maybe. Yeah, to theater, yeah.
And the opiate piece that you were doing at one point?
Opiate piece, yeah, I, well, I was talking to Sean about this the other day, asking for some advice, but I, I'm, at the moment, I have put out a request to the city and the police, uh, to like sit down and see if they wanna do this, um, together or if, you know, we can go at it our own way and, and do our own community thing without them. My preference, of course, is for us to do it all together.
Right.
But, um, but you know, I know that they have stuff to do and they're busy and they got priorities and I may not align with my own, so. But at the moment, there's nothing, nothing forecasted, yeah.
Okay.
I did go to a meeting this morning, the Peace and Justice Center, um, who, uh, convened a meeting of folks working to, uh, figure out the way that race plays into all kinds of major systems, education being one of them and, and crime and policing being another and housing being another and health being another. Um, and at, uh, at Burlington, they're doing some interesting conversations around, um, the way that they do discipline and the way that it impacts populations differently. So, 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 you know, Legal Aid put out a report saying that, uh, kids of color, uh, kids are free to reduce lunch and kids in, with special ed plans tend to be, uh, involved with some form of exclusionary discipline, suspension or expulsion at two to three times.
at two to three times the rate of everybody else. Um, and, and, you know, I'm sure in individual cases, there's always reasons for it, but overall, it paints a picture of the notion that we're not doing enough for everybody. Or, or we're not doing enough for the kids who need us the most.
And then they extended that to show that then that interaction with police once they're out of school increases and, and that's the statistics here in Vermont.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Which is alarming that we are right there with the rest of the nation in this discrepancy and this inequality of interactions. Yeah, because it does have long-term impacts.
It's a culture of its own.
The school, the prison pipeline is, is alive and well in Vermont.
Is alive and well, yes, in Vermont, which was a little shocking to read that report.
Right, right, 'cause we don't see ourselves that way, I certainly don't see us that way.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so in Burlington, they're, they're taking kind of a proactive approach. They put together a, a subcommittee of the board and they're, they're doing sort of a study group around, you know, what kind of behavioral intervention stuff works before you get to the, you know, the sanctioning end of things. And then when you do get to the sanctioning things, how can you, how can you put sort of restorative, um, lenses on it to try to keep people in the school? And at the very least, can, can you stop doing out of school suspensions? Or if you do out of school suspensions, is there a place to put that kid where they can be safe for a day and still be learning? Like the Boys and Girls Club is their sort of Band-Aid solution in Burlington for now. Um, so given that Chittney County, uh, and particularly Burlington and Winuski has, uh, a particularly pronounced population of kids of color, kids with free reduced lunch and special ed, uh, it seems to me that this is kind of relevant for us.
Yep, very much so.
Where it goes, I don't know, that's one thing I was asking Sean about the other day, is, you know, how can, what can we do?
Right, can we join them or create our own to see how we're doing with that?
Do we have our own local stats? Uh, well, that's what Sean asked me, is, are there data? And so I was talking to Jay and he says, as a board member, you should go to the State Department, State Agency of Ed and, and ask them uh, to give you the discipline data over the past few years. The, the data he used was from two thousand one, two thousand twelve, so, I mean, we can get that, but then it'd be interesting to see the rest of the stuff. Um, because, I mean, I don't think any of this happens with intent, you know, I don't think anybody's trying to like exclude, uh, those populations because, you know, they, they, they think they deserve it or anything like that. Uh, but, but something about the way that we've built this thing and our system of discipline has ended up with that effect, which means I think we need to reexamine. And I know that, um, uh, what did, what did I look at tonight? There was, there was something in the, uh, in the report that you made, Sean, about, um, uh, responsive classrooms and PBIS wasn't in there, but I know that it's in the building.
Right.
Uh, and did, was there something about restorative practices in there somewhere?
There is a, um, Matt Webb is taking some students to a restorative justice workshop. There's some, there's some energy in Chittney County around it and there's a couple of different, I think, South Burlington, Burlington High School. And so we're trying to jump onto that to see if it's something that would fit.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And I know, I think you've, you've done a little bit of, um, work on restorative justice too through the partnership, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, what did, what did you do?
Um, although we didn't do much, like, a lot of it came out of Youth Leadership Institute because restorative justice was, um, one of the workshops that we learned about. And so Burlington students were kind of inspired about, um, inspired from that and wanted to bring it to Burlington. So I guess I might s- have started some things along with the adults wanting to start something, so they kind of just combined, they collaborated.
Mm-hmm.
Then those seniors graduated and so I don't know what's going on.
Succession plan, the initiative for the list, yeah.
It's gonna be a peace jam conversation at some point, uh, given their affinity for all things peace. Um, so I don't know, I, at the meeting I went to this morning, I was struck by the complexity of the issue, right? Because, I mean, you talked a lot about Sean, I mean, I can't, it's hard to perform in school if you don't have the basics, uh, you know, housing, nutrition, clothing and so forth and so, you know, aren't, what, what are the linkages to, you know, those sorts of deficiencies and these kinds of discipline practices? I think they're probably not unrelated, uh, you know, and, and, I mean, you've been doing a great job with the nutrition piece and the wellness piece and all that stuff, but, you know, is, on the consequence side, are there things that we can do differently that will be more equitable and, and ultimately better for the community, right? 'Cause the more people are, who are in school and can finish school at any level, uh, the better off you are. And certainly cutting back on the school, you know, prison pipeline, uh, notion.
It's better for all of our communities.
Everybody, 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 right. And, and it's interesting because, you know, we, we have a new American population who, who, uh, were not, um, you know, culturally born into American racial dynamics, but they're here. And so now, you know, they, like it or not, people assign them racial identities that they didn't necessarily come with, you know? And so now, now we're, now we're in, in the middle of it and, and so even though we don't have a huge sort of, you know, multi-generational African-American population, we do have them. Um, you know, we have now African-Americans in, 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 in all the ways that you could construe the phrase, you know? So I think it's pretty relevant for us and I don't quite know what to do. You guys are on it to a certain extent, uh, I don't know how much it's a focus, I don't know how much bandwidth you guys have or something like that, but.
Yeah, well, I think that, I think like you and I discussed, the data would be a good place to start.
Yeah.
So I, I, I wrote it down, I can make that request to the agency.
Oh, great, okay.
And get that, so you know, it's a good one.
Does it come polished or is it something that needs to be polished?
I have no idea.
If you get something wrong, I mean, I know, I can certainly work with it.
Okay.
Yeah. See what we can do. Great. No problem with that.
It's good, good starting point.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause if you don't, yeah, you don't wanna assume you have a problem and you don't wanna assume you don't. Yeah, let's say, let's, let's say we need, let's take an X-ray, see what's going on here.
Right.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that, that was.
Yeah.
Good, all right, anything else that we missed? Very good, um, next time, we had talked about moving the meeting to a Tuesday. As innocuous as it seemed to me when I made that decision, the October meeting was moved to, to the Tuesday and, uh, that canceled out, Tori. Tuesday the thirteenth? Because of some childcare.
Mm-hmm.
Jen, I don't know if that made things not work, we will.
Um.
This is Tuesday, Tuesday the thirteenth?
No, I have not, a daughter that can babysit Tori. So, babysitter.
Uh, we, what do we need for quarter three?
Yes.
So you can do it?
Yeah, I can do it.
I can do it, I'll have, I'll have some, I might have some negotiations around it. It was from an, uh, from an Education Act forty-six piece to get Nicole there who has a VSPA meeting on Wednesday every time we have a meeting, so.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
That was an effort to get her there. So is that gonna work? Are your negotiations gonna be tou- tough? I mean, we could push the Education Act forty-six out and put it back.
He's already through it, he's gonna have to give up in his mind.
Right, exactly.
Right, I can see that. But I wanna, I wanna make sure that we, if we're gonna have Nicole come, we're gonna, minimum, I, I would rather have her come when everybody can be there. She can't make our Wednesday board meetings. Okay. So would a push out to a Thursday help you? I don't know what you're.
Push out to Thursday would definitely help me a ton, but.
Then you have to worry about negotiations and everything else, 'cause that's gonna be starting.
This is early October, yeah. Wait, so, I'm sorry.
Well, the thirteenth is the, what the meeting is scheduled for, we have a negotiations meeting scheduled for the fifteenth, Thursday.
And we also have.
Oh.
And don't we have another Thursday thing at double?
Okay, um.
Oh, right, the Fall Forum for VHI.
That's also, it's up to over on a Thursday.
That's the week.
Is it all Tuesday, three or that Tuesday?
It's all Tuesday.
All Tuesday. Yeah, yeah, so that's something I completely missed when I, when we pulled it in, so. Julian, if you're pretty convinced or can let me know relatively soon, I just, so we can keep it on the Wednesday and run like we always do and move the Act forty-six education to somewhere. If, if Nicole is starting to get some help at VSPA to get more people to be able to go out, it's not necessarily her, but they have, maybe they're training somebody that isn't part of the, the VSPA for their meeting, that can come to it. And if we push it out to November in our normal meeting, maybe.
Okay.
I just, I would like to have as many of us as we can without canceling them out. I can do it, uh, but, but, yeah, it'd be better if everyone were here. Let's take a, if we can take a pulse and see if, say, November works, if somebody's trained and up and running. We're gonna get it again anyway, so if we get a partial on it first pass.
Okay, I'll check it out.
Good.
And we can all educate ourselves a little bit too.
Yeah, we're gonna need that, all right.
Just read the sixty-four pages.
All right, very good, anything else? All right, with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Second.
So moved.
Punchy, it's getting late.
It's getting late.
I would at that point then go directly to the, I would, all those in favor of adjourn, aye? Opposed? Okay, no executive session, so we are done, thank you very much.